Welcome, everyone. This is a meeting of Board of Selectmen. Today is July 25th. It is 4:30 PM. Is there a motion to call the meetings of order?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And just under, I'll take the meeting a little out of order. I just want to make an announcement. Why Selectmen Warner is not here. He's in New Hampshire, traveling with the Acushnet for Haven, Baf, Ruth, Ruth team. As you may or may not know, they won the state championship and are now competing for the New England Regional Championship. And as of today, they are heading to the finals. So congratulations to the team, to Dave Warner's son Jacobs on the team. That's why he's out there traveling with the team, and to all the children that are playing on that team. Congratulations. Continue to kick butt and represent the town of Acushnet and for Haven. We're proud of you. We wish you the best in the finals, and hopefully you come home with a regional championship. So that's where Selectmen Warner is. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some minutes on the agenda, but I'll pass over those as I have not read them yet incomplete. So I just motion to pass over.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next order of business is Slocum Street vote to approve county ARPA funds for usage of police details. So as the residents may or may not know, the board is looking into and going forward with repairing Slocum Street sidewalks and things of the like. It's about two decades, maybe three decades overdue. We are using ARPA funds and hopefully some money out of the Transportation Bond Bill that's been approved several years back as well cumulatively. It looks like we'll need all of those funds. And this is just a simple motion that we need to go through to acquire the county funds through a company that's handling that for us. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the funding with ARPA funds of police detail assignments in the amount of $20,000 associated with the Slocum Street Infrastructure Improvement Project, including police details needed for the conduct and completion of engineering services performed by Woodward and Curran under in pursuit to the grant agreement executed between Bristol County and the Town of Acushnet Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Just so everybody knows that lives on Slocum Street, you may see some folks over there doing some wetlands work and some soil borings on the road and off the road on the sidewalks and things of the like. It's legit. It is the town of Acushnet, and Woodward and Curran's engineers will be doing the work at the end of, which were at the end of July and then the early part of August. And then from there, we'll be doing a team meeting, Mr. Kelly, myself, Kathy Silver from DBW, Dan Manad, and the folks from Woodward and Curran to give us an update on what we're doing and how we're moving forward. Is that correct, Mr. Kelly?
Correct.
Excellent. All right. Next, we have an ambulance bill. Abatements we need to make is coming from Chief Fallon. It's his recommendation along with the finance team to approve the write-offs. This is in accordance with a newly created policy and will help with the finance team's efforts to clean up the books. And Selectmen Hinckley, I will make the motions through the run numbers and not identifying the individuals. Please do not identify the individuals. So is there a motion to approve run number 22-274854 in the amount of $2,252.53?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the abatement for 21-168003 in the amount of $345.60?
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And last but not least, number, run number 22-163799 in the amount of $1,656.40.
So moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hinckley.
Of course.
So we have a safety committee, I guess some discussion on the Apple Peach Festival. We have Police Chief Chris Richmond here, Fire Chief Tommy Fallon here. Mr. Hinckley, I believe that you were sitting in on the safety committee meetings according to Mr. Kelly, with Mr. Kelly. So I'll leave it for you to roll it up.
Mr. Kelly, if you want to kick it off?
Mr. Kelly, whoever.
We had a couple meetings on both issues of the Apple Peach Festival and the parade. The Lions Club is also is coordinating the parade this year. And there was also a discussion about the yard sales. There's going to be temporary no parking signs on one side of Main Street. And then there's the issue with, there's going to be no candy thrown because of insurance issues. And there'll be no lockers. It will all be vehicles in the parade. The Lions Club came in for their two-day license, one-day licenses today. So they'll have that before the board on the 8th. And the issue that it's come down to is that fire and police details, the estimates from fire are 2,700 for details. For police, for the festival, 5,400. And for the parade, 1,200, for a total of $9,300. Last year, we took 2,500 out of the celebrations budget. This is way over the celebrations budget. And so I'm bringing it to the board to see what they want to do.
Well, I guess this, I've talked to Mr. Ford, and he can't make it tonight. So I don't really want to formalize anything that we do tonight on this discussion. But I did want to have the discussion. Is there some concerns over the amount of details we're doing? And is some concern over being charged, I guess, from EMS, because we were never charged in the past. So I'll take Fire Chief Fallon first, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium and having that discussion. So we could try to figure out the detail thing, because it's getting kind of crazy, the expense, the cost of having the Apple Peach Festival. I know that they don't raise a lot of money, and they're paying a lot more money to get things done there. So, you know, if we have, I know Fire does, they accrue all the way, sells hamburgers and things of the like with some of our EMS folks. So I don't know why we're incurring costs associated with EMS if there, a lot of folks are going to be on the site, and we have an ambulance that's always parked out front anyway.
So how it worked last year was we had, the ambulance was stationed at Station 2, just down the road. We had both four-wheel quads on-site, as well as a gator unit from the Mass Department of Fire Services, so that we could not have to drive the ambulance onto the feast grounds with everybody walking around. We'd be able to put a patient on the back of the state's gator. The quads, one is equipped with fire suppression equipment. The other one just has all the medical equipment, so that way we can get around the fairgrounds easier. We dedicate three people to that festival. One strictly for fire, the other two are EMS employees, and they are tied to that ambulance. And the reason that we have it dedicated and not just use the personnel that are there at the booth, is the people that are there at the booth are dedicated to the booth for the association. So we have staff that's dedicated to working in a capacity. Last year, I had set it up prior without hearing from, from the committee, just so that we had it covered, so that there was no question of if we'd be able to maintain safety at the festival. And that was just absorbed by my overtime budget.
We have room to do that again this year?
We'll make it work.
Just, it's, it's kind of, I mean, he's using a number like $9,000, right? And I get it. Safety's everything for me, right? That's, that's our job, first and foremost, right? Is being committed to the safety of our community. But, you know, just, the cost is just getting out of control. And, you know, I've had a good conversation with Mr. Ford, and he's been doing this for 40 years since day one. And I'd like to thank Tommy for that, and everybody else that's been involved. But, I mean, at some point, the costs are going to get so draconian that we're not going to be able to hold the Apple Peach Festival. And I think a lot of our people, not only from our community, but surrounding communities, look forward to the Apple Peach Festival every year. So I hate to lose it over, you know, things that we can absorb ourselves, instead of going ahead and appropriating, you know, more money as far.
It'll be a lot easier for my department to absorb the cost, just the way that our budgets worked. And we won't have the same overtime crunches this year that we did last fiscal year, because we are fully staffed right from the get-go. There's no openings. We're not covering open shifts on a regular basis. So as far as that goes, if, if the money's better used to help offset Chief Richmond, that's fine.
We know, we know no matter what, we have our fire and EMS department staffed, right? So whether they're staffed down there or staffed in-house, they're always ready to go. And that's always been the case. So if we can just make that work within, that would go along, I think that would go a long way for, I think, everybody in the community. So whatever we can do there, you know, it would be pretty commendable if you could make that work for the, from your aspect.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Almost.
Good morning. I'm not so much concerned, we lead by saying I'm not so much concerned about the funds as I am the staffing. Come the end of the year, come the end of the fiscal year, I want to put, first of all, for the festival, I want to put the proper number of people there that need to be there. The fact that we've had that festival a number of years, it's been woefully understaffed. It's probably even woefully understaffed from a public safety point of view for probably 20 years. Last year was my first festival, you know, as chief. The prior two were canceled due to COVID. But I can tell you, prior to that, I hadn't worked up there in probably in five to seven years. I can tell you the reason why, because it's woefully understaffed. It is a mess. So my, my plan is to increase the number of offices there, and also, I might as well mention it now, is to institute a one-way north between Robinson Road and Lake Street during the time of the festival, to try to, number one, to control traffic a little better, number one, and number two, to give pedestrians a place to walk. Anybody that's been up there and tries to walk to and from parking lots on the side of Main Street with two-way traffic going on, it's a mess. There are no sidewalks. There's very small breakdown lane, maybe a foot or two. We have fog lines. So the plan is to try to cone off or cordon off that southbound lane and allow pedestrian traffic over there, so they can safely get to and from, you know, the festival. As far as the cost goes, I'm not necessarily looking for extra money now to, we'll staff it as I see appropriate. But come the end of the fiscal year, just kind of keep that in mind, that, hey, this is, you know, $5,000 to $6,000 that we normally don't pay, if it comes to that at the end of the fiscal year.
So you're proposing shutting down a lane?
Correct. So, yeah. The only thing that would be open would be the northbound lane of Main Street between Robinson Road and Lake Street. We'd be diverting traffic, you know, via signage and other methods down, down Lake and down, down Quaker.
You don't feel that's going to add a lot of confusion, Chief, to the, to the folks? I mean, we're all used to, I know what you're saying. I get what you're saying. But there's a lot of people that head down Lake Street and take a right and park in that parking lot across the street, on the opposite side of the street, on the east side. So now you can't do that, and everybody's going to have to come around, including the bands, right? They would, everybody's, all traffic's going to be coming from the southbound side, heading in, if they want to get into the festival, the band people, anybody parking, they're all going to have to come around. So now you're going to really load the south end.
It's six, one half dozen of them, another, Mr. Gasco?
Yeah.
The fact, the fact that, not going with the fact that we've had and haven't had anything up there significant in the last, last five, 10 years, it's, it's, it's a miracle, to be honest with you. We have people parking in the fields, you know, they're, they're walking, we don't, we don't have enough staff, and then you don't have enough room for them to walk. So, you know, most of the people that go there, they're walking on areas that are unimproved, whether it's, you know, it would be nice if somebody's front lawn and it was anything, but it's not. Some of the areas are, are locked in the portals. So.
I get it. I've locked the portals.
All, you know, all it needs is somebody to, you know, most innocent thing is somebody to mistake the gas pedal for the brake. And I, I, I'm not going to, I don't want to deal with that. I've noticed the town. Don't want to see that happen. I think the, the Apple Peach Festival from a public safety point of view, I can tell you, when I started in 1995, the same number of offices was scheduled from 1995, you know, until 2019 before COVID. It was the same, we would laugh amongst the station, you know, before I was chief, because the sheet would come out, and it was the same schedule, if you will, for the same number of offices from 1995 to, you know, to 2019. I mean, in the, in the amount of, that, that has grown, and circumstances have changed over the years, I think we need to be proactive and take the pull by the horns.
What is your staffing plan? Do you have a number of offices, obviously, out on the street?
Yeah. Well, yeah, the Lions Club always hired, that's independent Lions Club, has got a one-day license hire as a, as a detail officer with the, the vehicle booth. The plan would be to have six offices, you know, sporadic, you know, between the lot across from Country Whip, Robinson Road, Lake Street, you know, Lake in Maine, and also right in front of the grounds, and also to be able to accommodate the bus. And perhaps a conversation, one of the meetings that Mr. Ford did attend, he expressed concern about the bus, both the bus and the pedestrian bus, where the people that park at the elementary school, that, and also the musicians, you know, where they go into Praley's just south of the festival grounds. And we could make it work. We have an officer over there just dedicated to, to the bus and to the musician traffic coming in and out of that, that separate parking lot over there. I should say separate parking lot, separate parking area for those, for those musicians that park in the orchard.
So if you're blocking off a lane, how many offices do we have out in the street? Do we only have three?
No, we, well, we, do we have those two locations, we'd have, I'm sorry, those three locations would be points. To be honest, you Quaker Lane in Maine might have two offices. But then we'd also have offices in the front, directly in front of the grounds. And that would free up an officer also to walk the grounds, because if anything happens, I know from working last year, I, I worked it, because we couldn't get enough people. I had to force everybody to work it, that we don't have enough people, like, patrolling the grounds. I'm not saying we have to have 15 officers patrolling the grounds, but you need to have somebody that's available for any type of emergency situation that requires our attention on the grounds itself. Otherwise, you're pulling people from the street, which is, creates another issue. We have no officers directing traffic in the street.
So we got, the Lions got one internal, you got one walking the grounds, and then you're going to have three out on the streets, and that's five. Where's the six-one gone?
We're going to have, we're going to have six people. I'm going to, we have the Lions, the Lions would be one, so let's just leave that out of it, because they are committed to the vehicle. I'm looking at six, between four, four and five in the street, and then you need somebody to be able to spell them to walk around the grounds. I mean, if anybody, anybody, and you know, you've been up there, anybody wants to try directing traffic at the intersection of Robinson Road and Main Street for more than 10 minutes, you need, you need, you need officers up there. You need. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not looking to collect, to collect money from, from the Apple Peach Festival. But I just, we need to be cognizant, very similar to, like, I know it's state law, but very similar to when we, we have the polls, you know, we hire the offices, and it's, it comes out of my, out of my budget, which I have no issue. I'm not going to bill, to me, it makes no sense to bill the town clerk. I keep track of how much we spend in that type of situation. If the town's going to commit to having the festival, we certainly need to commit to the public safety. As far as the plan, the number of offices that are in the street, whether it's four at one time or five another time, but I want six offices up there. I think that's the only way it's going to be, you know, it's going to be viable, to be able to run that operation the way it should be run.
Mr. Chairman, I think ultimately what this comes down to is, over the course of 40 years, finally realizing what things actually cost. And I think this is a bigger discussion than, not saying public safety isn't an important discussion, but ultimately, I think drawing revenue from the committee that puts the festival on needs to understand that the cost of everything does go up. And moving forward, not necessarily this year, I think we have to have a good sit-down conversation and see if there's a way that they can understand that things do cost more, and they're going to have to start generating a little bit more revenue, because the town can't absorb $9,000 every year. I, I think, I think that's a slippery slope, because 9,000 is going to turn to 10, then it's going to turn to 11, and by 2035, we're not going to have an Apple Peach Festival anymore, because it's going to cost 20 grand. And I think we, we need to sit down with Sue, and I think Sue and Tom have done a great job for 40 years doing this. And it's just them. And I, I think ultimately, a little bit more volunteer and help with them, trying to generate some money. There's opportunities for grants out there that would cover almost half of this cost right off the rip, that wasn't applied for, because they don't have the committee power to do that. They're all full-time workers, and, you know, I think, I think there's a way around this. I don't think necessarily that this year, there is a way around this. I spoke with a couple police officers in the last two days after, well, last day after our meeting yesterday, and every single one said, having short staff at the Apple Peach Festival is miserable, simply because after six hours of standing in the sun, even having the ability to switch roles with somebody walking the grounds, mixing it up, is helpful. And nobody actually likes to work it when they feel like they're understaffed.
Yeah, I get it.
It's tough. It's really tough. But like Chief said, public safety is a fairly important aspect to everything.
Right. So what is, you know, I think there's going to be another safety committee meeting. Mr. Ford told me that there's going to be another safety committee meeting soon, so we can take this back up on August 8th, and figure, figure some things out. I've reached out to some private businesses for donations. So, and I'll, and I'll publicly do it now, if there's any private businesses that are interested in donating funds to the Apple Peach Festival, I'm sure that they'd be more than happy to take those donations to help out with the cost. I know I've been in conversations with a few different folks that are, you know, seriously considering stepping up and making some donations to help out the Apple Peach Committee and to keep that going. So hopefully that'll come to fruition. So we'll see how that's going to go and help out, absorb some of these costs, you know, and put their name out there as a business, or if it's a business doing it, we'll put their name out there for a donation and things of the like. So, you know, maybe it draws more business to those folks, or whatever, whatever the case may be. But I've had some dialogue with them, just to see if this, you know, in other words, a cry for help, right? I mean, if we, if this is what we need to do to staff, we'll see how it works out this year. With closing the front of those street, the staffing the way it is, we'll take it, and we'll see, we'll run with the plan. I don't, I'd rather not finalize anything yet.
Correct.
But hopefully.
I don't mean to drug you, but we have taken steps. We at least put out feelers to Mast D O T, because that's a state road, you know, 105 Main Street over there. We have put out feelers to D O T. So when it's time to move forward, there is a process we gotta, you know, we gotta go through and just submit a form. It's basically a request, you know, a primary request. So that's somewhere down the road. But the impression that I got is that that won't take very long. So what we have put out feelers, just, you know, we're not kind of doing this off the cuff and say, hey, let's just do this. It's something that's been talked about amongst some of the officers that have worked that detail, you know, more often than I have in the last 10 years.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, one more time. I had spoken with the gentleman that is essentially the liaison for the Lions Club that is spearheading the parade this year. And I had mentioned to him, I said, well, if you're really pushing this parade, and you really want it to happen, are they willing to kick in towards police staffing or EMS staffing to cover the parade? Because there was a line item that Chief brought up yesterday at the committee, a certain dollar amount, rough idea, towards the parade safety. And he's reaching out there. So that might help a little bit if they do decide to do that.
Yep. I know, I know the Lions has taken on a, a big role, trying to do the right thing for the community. It's just, you know.
I don't want to steal Chief Fallon's thunder, but out of that meeting, Deputy Director Ed Karen of EMA, they have pretty much run that parade.
Yes, they have.
You know, you know, with volunteers from for Haven and New Bedford, and perhaps even Dartmouth over the years, where the commitment was made to have the parade earlier this year, you know, I say, the commitment was made earlier, like, last year, it's kind of like, last minute, hey, we're going to have a parade, we're not going to have a parade. Ed was able to reach out and get a commitment of services there, you know, to help out with the parade, you know, as they have in the past. So that's, that's a big thing.
Yep. You do a great job.
All right. Mr. Chairman, one more thing, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Chief, just to clarify, the one side, no parking on Main Street, which side would that be? Just so everybody at home does know.
It's going to be the side, and to be honest with you, out of, out of convenience, it's going to be the side with the, the utility poles, because that allows us to put up the temporary no parking signs. So it does alternate from side to side, but we'll put a sign, as we did, tried to do last year, put a sign on every pole, you know, temporary sign that we can then.
I did reach out to the community and said it will be strictly enforced. So helped you guys out the best I can. I tried with the yard sales. The community response was, you know, crazy.
Well, that's the, that's the weekend with the traffic.
Yeah, correct.
Of course. I mean, you can't, you can't start doing things where you start taking away from the community, just to do certain things. I mean, and we've been, we're all big men and women. I think we all know how to manage our properties for yard sales and the thing of like, yeah, traffic can be a little screwed up, depending on how much stuff people have out there. But.
We did the one, the one side.
Let's not make more of an Apple Peach Festival. It's basically 10, 15,000 square feet of land. We don't have to make this great big thing out of it and start telling everybody, oh, you're going to stop this, and you're going to stop that. I don't think that's what, that's not what Acushnet's all about, in my eyes.
It was more about the parking situation on Main Street, because the only real road that's going to come into play would be Main Street. And obviously, roads that are shut off while the parade's going by, just to give people the heads up there.
The parade's an hour.
Correct.
Yeah. We're not shutting the roads down, no parking all, all day.
No parking on one side. We alternate as we go up the road. We did it last year. We did it last year, worked out. Because otherwise, you get certain areas of Main Street, you get the yard sale on either side, people park on both sides. You can't get, you can just about get two small vehicles by each other going north and south. So we just do one side. We alternate as we go up. We did it last year. It seemed to work out better than it hasn't, you know, in past years. And then even, we had a supply of signs and cones for the day of Saturday, more so, because Saturday's probably the bigger day for the yard sale, that the officers that are working the road, if something pops up and it looks like it's an issue, then, you know, we, we'll, we do another area. But it's, we're only doing parking on, like you said, it'll alternate from one side to the other. And like I said, the signs.
So for the people at home, though, when we talk about the feast grounds, you had said it's from, you're heading northbound on Main Street, heading southbound on Main Street, coming from the north, heading south, right? So if you were coming from the Lake Street side, heading towards Country Whip, the side where the festival actually is being held on, that's the lane you're closing, right in front of the festival?
Yes, that's, that's.
That's the one that makes most sense, right?
The southbound lane, you're on the same side.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One quick thing. When we talked to the state about grants, they said that we need a valid committee. They were not looking at a two-person committee as a valid committee. So we're going to need volunteers on that committee, too.
Sure. I mean, you already have two that's on the Apple Peach, right? Sue and Tommy. And then you can have, we can, some, somewhere down the road.
Drago.
We can toss Mr. Hinckley into that. I mean, I know he was talking with Rep Schmidt, I believe, over some grants, but we missed that opportunity this year. So, you know.
That's where.
Mr. Hinckley would like to take that on and work with the Apple Peach Festival Committee?
I'd be more than happy. I'll leave the organizational skills up to my wife, and she already said she'd help me. So I'd be more than happy to help out. And I think next year, moving forward, now that I have the resources and understand the grants, and I can tell them what they have to do to.
Apply.
Apply for them, and, you know, status, whether it be, you know, set up the nonprofit status, make sure it's.
I think they are nonprofits.
I'm pretty sure they are.
So it'll work out?
You know, it'll work out pretty well. We won't be paying catch-up as much next year.
Right, 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 right. All right. I appreciate that. All right. No motion necessary.
Thanks for coming in on your vacation, Chief.
Can you make sure, Mr. Kelly, can you make sure that you do another safety committee meeting before August 8th, with Mr. Ford and Mr. Goddard, please? And the Chiefs, obviously? So the next item on the agenda is just a. So the next item on the agenda is just a preliminary, set the, and I say preliminary because we don't know whether or not it's actually gonna happen, we'll see if, what's needed and what's necessary at a fall town meeting, but right now, the discussion will be for 11-6-2023, is there a motion to approve 11-6-2023? It's a preliminary date for the fall town meeting.
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Bike Memorial Design Approval, Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Chairman, I met with representatives of the South Coast Bike Way folks, along with Heather Chu, our COA Director. Originally, they were looking to the DPW to build the base and for the memorial, in our discussions, we convinced them that it should be, funding should be covered by private donations or organization donations, and they talked about having a volunteer contractor do the work to do the pad and the pole that the bike will attach to.
Okay, so it's not the way I see the bike sitting right now, right? It's sitting in the lawn?
No, it will be.
So it'll be welded to a pole?
Yep.
Fixed so that nothing can happen to it?
Correct, and there'll be no tax payer funds used.
Okay, all right. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the Bike Memorial Design.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next, Selectman Warner is not here, so I'm gonna pass over the fifty-five Community Housing Discussion, move on. Number six, it's number seven is town-owned parcels under twenty thousand square feet, so, over the years, I've been looking at, and I've been, a lot of residents have come to me with property that are on the side of their houses with small postage stamp lots that they had interest in purchasing from the town. Unfortunately, with the town administrators we've had in the past, nothing's ever come to fruition with that, so now, I got it on the agenda, because Mr. Kelly says he's got a bylaw that he knows, where he's aware about, and he can, he could draft something up for the Town of Acushnet where it would allow the Board of Selectmen to dispose some of these small postage-sized landmarks, parcels, that abudders may have interest in.
It's either through an RFP process or the planner in the town of Ducksbury, I've had a brief discussion with him, and he's going to send their methodology up.
Yeah, so, I did have a conversation with Ms. Kelly Kosker, assessors, and she's got something on the books that says some, certain things need to be done first, review of legal title documents, and then insert a land disposition article in the town meeting warrant, and it requires a two-thirds vote, and she went on and on and on and on, but it's just some of the things that we would need to do, we can't just simply say, yeah, you're an abuddah, we'll sell you a piece of land for X amount of dollars, there's a process that needs to follow through, so I think the first thing we would need to do is get that article prepared for town meeting if we can.
That's on the list for the, if we have it in November.
Mr. Smith?
My name's Kevin Smith, I live on 161 Lawson Avenue, I've been through this, okay? How this was set up, this was back in the nineties, how it was set up was all up Lawson Avenue, the lots are divided, and there's paper streets, so you have, paper street is only forty feet wide, so you have, one neighbor owns the property, the other owns the other half. What you do, what they, I was told to do, and what I had to do on mine, was you petition the town from any of the abudders around, if you wanna do away with the paper street, if it's a legitimate thing, then you come before the town, Conservation, and any other board that needs to, to determine whether or not it should be done and it can be done legally. Like my, my lots where I was, everything was non-buildable. I owned the property all the way down, I can't sell any of it, my neighbor owned all the property all the way down, and then Bradford Avenue on the back, the quarry owns the other side of it, so there's no, and it's all wetlands, so you're not gonna build anything. It does have to have a two-thirds majority vote, and that can be the stick when, you know, you get into town meeting and you have a debate on it, and then, once that's passed, then it reverts back and you can get the survey done and the taxes, you know, obviously the town's gonna get tax money on it, that's how, that's how it worked. I believe that the law, the law at one point, you didn't have to, it didn't cost you anything? I mean, that's not for all property, I'm just talking about a paper street here, because that's what I know.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, and that's how it worked then.
Yeah, some of them are, some, I guess, we have one actually, I'm not gonna talk about that one now, because I'm not, I had that item on the agenda, but there is one off all of our...
Right, but that was, that was the way they said, and I had to submit it to the town clerk, and like I said, then it went through everybody, Conservation, everybody signed off on it, and it was put on the warrant, and it was voted on there, I had to get up and explain why we were doing it, and I went all the way up the street to Main Street and had everybody sign off on it.
So that would just raise the question from our perspective of whether or not, if, if an abuddah owns, already owns to the center of the road, which there's a lot of them out there that do own to a center of the road, some may own the whole paper street, right? So there's nothing, no action to be taken there?
No, right.
So it's, it's a done deal?
Yeah.
It's not dissolved in a paper street by the town?
No.
If the town owns a paper street, that's...
That's a different story.
Where we stop, we have to do the same thing, and then we'd have to, I guess, decommission the paper street as well as then transfer the property over.
Right.
So that's, that's different if the town owns...
Right, and then probably be other fees involved in it as well, you know, but whatever, I mean, to me, with all the paper streets that are all, like all around the quarry and everything, it would benefit the town because you're gonna get the tax money, you're gonna dissolve all the paper streets that aren't buildable, and then, you know, that may be something you go before the...
Yeah, we're just looking at town-owned, we're looking right now specifically at town-owned parcels under twenty thousand square feet of land.
Okay.
So we're starting with that because it's something that I, I've done some research on.
Mm-hmm.
There's not, there's not, there's not a boatload of them, so I think that we start there, and I don't really, I could speak for myself, I can't speak for, for Mr. Hinckley, but I know there's a request in here that somebody's actually interested in purchasing twenty-five acres of town-owned land, I would never do that, I don't think the community would ever go for it. We, we adopted CPC, I think it was 2004?
Right.
Just for that purpose, so for somebody to ask the town, I get it, you can ask, but where would we be if we started selling off large tracts of land to private people, right? And who's to say that, you can't just say this person's gonna get it just because you're an abuddah either, so if that land went up, say we did a large tract of land, you know how many people would come in and be interested in buying that land?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And besides that, something has to be left as far as open space and recreational forestry or whatever for our future generations, right? We can't be a bunch of bums today and just sell off our land because we want money and new growth, that's bogus, right? And, and that's why I started the conversation, and we said, we'll just look at the postage-sized lots, twenty grand and under, some lots, and we have to be careful because in the Business Village District area, ten thousand is a, is a buildable lot. So obviously, when we go through and we identify where these lots would be, the appraiser needs to know, and that's part of their due diligence, would work through the assessor's office and look at it and say, well, that's ten thousand square feet lot, it's not wetlands, and it's a buildable lot in that district, obviously that appraisal will come up a lot higher, you put a minimum bid on it, we're not just gonna sell ten thousand square foot lots, especially if they're buildable for five thousand dollars and have somebody buy it.
Didn't, didn't the town start this process with the previous town administrator?
It kinda went nowhere, right? We haven't, we don't have a bylaw.
Well, I, yeah.
So you need a bylaw.
They were talking, they were looking, they were looking to do that, because I know they were also saying, well, we're gonna rescind all the streets that have been done away with, and, you know, all that done, it's like, you can't do that, you've already had two-thirds votes, you know, but I'm just saying, it's probably a good idea to continue the process that you are talking about.
Yeah.
After you do the small parcels, and then go one step further.
I don't think we, I don't think the town would have an appetite, because, and honestly, I know I don't have an appetite, I would never sell off a large tract of land of the Town of Acushnet lots to somebody else, because it's not guaranteed to go to that abuddah.
No.
Right? A developer's gonna come in, and they're gonna say, I'm gonna give you a half a million dollars, the abuddah thinks, hey, maybe I can get that for, you know, whatever it may be, there's one in here, right, off of Boxdale, that they're interested in twenty-five acres, it's on, it's on the agenda tonight to talk about, but the reality of it is, is there's no guarantee anybody's gonna get it, in fact, if that twenty-five acres went up for sale, I'd probably be looking to purchase it, right?
It's waves around and not necessarily...
Right, it's just, it's not something that I think the town people would have the appetite to start, that's why we, we adopted CPC for the very reason, for preservation and recreation of open space, and we've done very little with CPC for that thing, we're spending on other things now, because it's like, you can spend it on all this other stuff, it's kinda like excise tax, right, roads and bridges, right? And it's used for, one point four million dollars of it now is used for budgetary reasons, yay! So, I mean, it's just, you know, the buck's gonna stop somewhere, and I think that you need people that are responsible individuals that are on this board to say this is where the buck's gonna stop, I think it's, I think it's a good idea that we do, do away with a small little postage-sized lots, that aren't doing the town any damn good in between two other house lots.
Right.
I don't think, like, I wouldn't come in and say, I wanna buy that house lot that's got five thousand square feet, it's got no purpose to me, right? So if you do have the two, if there's two abuddas, they might be interested, one might not be financially ready to do it, and the other one's gonna get it, and that's kinda what we would be looking to is, that's, that's where I'm, I'm thinking is.
You can even, like I said, you can set it up the same way, you have the abuddas that are around it, you get a petition so that, you know, you know, if you don't know what it is, and it's there, it's not going to a developer, you put stipulations on it.
I think that's, that's exactly what...
You put the stipulations on it, through a bylaw or whatever, and, you know...
Well, that's what we're figuring out, this is just the opening dialogue to this conversation.
Right, thank you.
So, thank you. Ms. Hinckley, do you have anything to add?
I think you covered it pretty well, I had already reached out, Kelly, probably about a month and a half ago, when we spoke through Jamie about this, Jamie had mentioned that you were interested in this, and I had her put together a preliminary list of it, once I saw the square footage that was suggested, I followed up with it yesterday, so she's gonna be printing me off a list of town-owned properties without conservation restrictions, twenty thousand feet and under, once we have that, I think we, it's a good way to start, get all the properties lined up, and then we start walking into bylaw phase and everything else, and I think it's a good thing to get started, and could be beneficial to everybody.
Well, that's good, then I'll make a motion to have Selectman Bob Hinckley do some research on this subject matter and report back to the board with how many properties the town has fit in this criteria.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next, we have two privilege, sewer privilege fees to approve, one for thirty-five James Street, in the amount of fourteen thousand, eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents, is there a motion to approve the sewer privilege fee pursuant to the town bylaws?
So moved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a second for thirty-seven James Street in the amount of fourteen thousand, eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve sewer privilege fee pursuant to the town bylaws?
Motion approved.
I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We, we do have Boxdale Lane Land Purchase Inquiry, and this is the one that I just spoke on, the twenty-five acres, from Chris Ciano.
That would be us.
That would be you?
That would be my wife and I, yes.
So I guess you, you heard that conversation, the previous conversation, about trying to sell off a large tract of land, right? It's not something that I don't believe the board would ever be interested in.
Do I have?
Yeah, you can go up there, sir, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Chris Ciano, Fifty-two Morse's Lane, so, I did hear your conversation a few minutes back with large tracts of land, which I do agree with, but I believe this particular piece is somewhat landlocked, which I think makes it a little unique and different than just an open tract that residents might have access to and use to. I don't think it's any different than somebody that would like to purchase a piece of land, say, a paper street or a postage stamp lot that's less than twenty thousand square feet. If it's, if they're an abuddah, and the land is landlocked between, say, several town residents, what makes that piece different than a piece that might be a twenty thousand square feet or less?
It's twenty-five acres.
Other than the size of it.
What's that?
Other than the size.
Why would, why would, why would the town wanna dispose of twenty-five acres of open space and recreational, and it's just a forest street, right? We got all these solar farms coming in and wiping that, that land out, matter of fact, you have one, you said your address is Morse's Lane, correct?
We do, we have one.
You have a monster solar field that's being proposed right now to go back there and wipe out fifty-plus acres of forestry.
Uh, no, twenty-five, not fifty.
No, if that's yours, I'm talking about off Park Drive.
No, no, that...
That's like a five or seven megawatt solar...
That one I'm not...
Right, and that's all forestry, my friend, so we're just wiping trees out left and right, right? I'm just not that guy, I just don't have any appetite to dispose...
I'm not saying we can't sell land with restrictions to it, we, you know, that, that's fine too, I'm just, other than the size of the parcel, what is the difference between a resident buying a ten thousand square foot piece or a resident buying a twenty-five acre piece to use for personal use? Maybe not for a solar field or for development, what's the difference?
Mr. Chairman, just a question, you might know the answer a little bit better than me, to touch base on that, a lot of grants involving open space, town has to show a certain amount of open space, we have the train coming, requirements of open space, there's requirements of housing, some, all of that will come into play for this, being such a large tract of land, we pull twenty-five acres out of town's open space, we may lose future grant funding towards that, I have to look into it to verify, and I will, the other thing is, requirements from the state, a lot of time have to do with open space requirements, especially with our CPC and allowing us to utilize money.
Absolutely, if it's anything that is, you know, I know sometimes there's land in Dartmouth, there's a couple hundred acres that was purchased from the state, the owners, there's residents that still own the land now, they can't do anything with it, it's part of open space, and they were paid to keep it that way, so I, I don't know exactly what the land is, I just, you know, I don't think we should...
I think it's nice that you, you wanna use, I think you rode here, you wanted to use it for farming, right?
We do, we wanna go farm.
I think that's fantastic, I'm all about farming, right? We're a right-to-farm community, I was, I was an advocate of that, right-to-farm, passing in the Town of Acushnet, I think that's great, but we don't know what the future holds for you and your family in the Town of Acushnet, right? And then we get somebody else that comes in and buys your property, the doors are wide open.
I disagree with this particular piece.
I don't think, I don't think we can tell, I don't think we can tell you that all you can do with that piece of land is use it for farming.
Uh, well, I think you can, you can put restrictions on things, the state does it all the time, but aside from that, there, there is more issues with that particular piece, there's no frontage anywhere, so, and I've learned a little bit about this when we purchased the land four years ago, what we can and can't do with it, and we already have restrictions on our land that we have now, there can be no more housing development, two houses and that's it, so, again, I'm not looking for anything different than anyone else that might wanna buy a smaller piece or a larger piece or whatever, but if town land's gonna be sold and it meets certain requirements, we just like the opportunity to buy it, that's all. So we'll see where it goes, but maybe we can keep an open mind to it instead of just shutting the door right away, that's all.
We, we, we could keep an open mind to it, but I can tell you this right now, I would say it'd be a cold day, and hell, if the townspeople approve selling off large tracts of land, my friend, I know my community pretty well, I've been here my whole life, and I know how adamant people were when we adopted CPC for that reason of open space and recreation, and I listened to a lot of people complain about solar farms going up in this town and wiping things out, so...
I don't disagree with a lot of the things that the solar companies have done or will do, but I think...
Maybe we can enter into, we, I'd have to look at that parcel that's with you, and I don't know if there's something, Mr. Kelly, you might be able to answer this better, but, you know, maybe the town, it would have a legal right to lease, so we could, we could definitely explore that where there's not all this disruption on the property, but you could lease the property.
We would be open to anything the town would...
So, I mean, if we, Mr. Kelly, can we explore that avenue, where if we have an individual at Ciano, we are a right-to-farm community, and if we could make an agreement that we could do something like that, and we could draw in revenue every year off of a lease, and we could accommodate a situation like this, I mean, if it's, is it, is it trade, is it forestry? Is it forestry or is it open, like just brush?
Uh.
Little of both?
A little of both, yeah.
Little. Maybe we could.
I, I haven't really walked the, the whole property. I don't know.
I haven't, I haven't looked down on it, like from, you know, Google Earth or anything like that to see anything.
I know it was part of.
I can explore it. Um, I'm pretty good with mapping, so wetlands and all that, we'll figure all of that stuff out.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, and take a look. I'll take a better look at this parcel. Um, I can, I can swing. Are you the last house up in the dead end part on Morse's?
There's three at the dead end part. We're the first one of the three.
The white one?
The white one, yeah.
Yeah, so I know, I know Morse's Lane very good. I used to ride my dirt bike back there when I was a little boy, so.
I sound a little bit.
Probably through that property, so. Um, you know, Deep Brook where it's being developed on the other side over there, so.
I know it well.
Yeah, we used to ride there all the time.
Well, like I said, we'd be open to anything if it's possible. If it's not, it's not, but.
Well, well, I'll have Mr. Kelly look into that and then if you don't mind, I'll swing by the house.
Anytime you like.
The weekend's good for you?
Uh, Sunday, we have my son's sixth birthday party. Come on down.
Yeah.
Bring your present.
Make sure you get a bottle of Tito's while.
No, no present needed, Tito's will be there.
Well, yeah, we'll, um, we'll, we'll take a look at that option, right? And see if it's something that we can explore.
Absolutely.
As long as we're not disturbing the land too much and if it's going to be used for agricultural reasons, um, we'll see where we can take that.
We know it won't happen overnight, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's a very creative way to tackle this. I think that's a win-win.
I mean, even if it's a portion of the twenty-five acres, right? Whatever we have that's available.
Absolutely.
Um, if that's what we're going to do and that, I can get down to the house, take a look at the operation, what you're doing now. And if we can promote more agricultural farming in this community, that's what we were founded on, right? Um, I live right by White's Dairy, so I know a little bit about that. Um, and my grandparents are big farmers back when I was a little boy as well, so. Um, farming's huge, right? And if you don't have food, you ain't going to eat solar fields, solar panels, right?
We are not.
So I'd love to see more people come into the community and start doing more farming where you're growing your fruits and vegetables locally here. Um, I support my local farmers as much as I can. I do it in other communities as well. I stop by farm stands constantly, right? I'm always looking for the better here or con, right? So it, it is what it is. I mean, that's what, that's what I do. I mean, anywhere I see a farm stand with strawberries, blueberries or whatever, I always try to stop in and give a few bucks to that farmer to support that farm because the moral of the story, right? Um, I think if we all did a little bit more of that, started buying the crap from a grocery store that we know has chemicals all over it.
One hundred percent.
That's, that's why I do that, right? So I'll get back to you, my friend.
Appreciate it.
No problem. All right, no vote necessary on that. Actually, you know what? I'll make a motion to have Mr. Kelly look into leasing, um, some agricultural land.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now it's official.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have another one. Olivera Ave Paper Street Inquiry. So this one I'm very familiar with because I grew up with, uh, one of my good friends lives at the bottom of it. Um, and their family actually owned all of it at one point in history, including parts of Pope Park. So he just writes, uh, it was actually addressed to Selectman Warner in an email. It says, I was just following up for a discussion in regards to a paper street that runs north and south along the west side of my property located at thirty-five Olivera Ave. I have maintained the property since I purchased my house in two thousand nine. My reason for the discussion in this email is that the town of Akushna has any plans to, in the near future, to remove this paper street. If you could please inform me and update me, greatly appreciate that. And he gives a little map. I'm very familiar with this property as, as the training family owns the big parcel at the very bottom of Olivera Ave. And that paper street does connect into the front of their property as well. Don't know much about somebody maintaining it. It is kind of brush written, so I don't know how much of it he's been maintaining. But this would be probably, it's a four thousand, it looks like it's roughly four thousand square feet.
It would be a discontinuance of a certain paper street stub town meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you can't do anything anyway because the paper street ends and the Rogers and have folks developed already. So that paper street's going nowhere. And it's been like that for decades. So it's kind of a viewpoint. This is exactly what I'm trying to.
So this would.
Identify as postage stamp lots that are doing the town of Akushna no damn good. Kick it off the books and, and I know Mr. Smith, he came up and said the town can get a little bit of taxes, but it's probably like twenty bucks. So, I mean, it's not, it's not. So it's been on my radar for several years. Um, I'm glad that I have Selectman Hinckley on board, um, that's going to take this and bull by the horn and run with it because, um, nobody else seemed to want to do anything as far as previous town administrators with this subject matter. And, and again, it's more about trying to help out a neighbor, you know, that has a small lot, right? You have a small five or six, eight thousand square foot lot. If you can add another three or four thousand square feet to your lot, knock yourself out, right? And you, and you make enough family, you know, a little bit better and a little bit happier owning the land and a peace of mind and they can do whatever they want with the yard and, you know. I, I already live on a, like a ten thousand square foot lot, right? And my neighborhood right by the White's Dairy, um, they're all basically ten thousand square foot lots. I've been here my whole life, um, but I will say this. When you are having a little party on your back patio, you don't really want your neighbors hearing all your business, right? And that's the problem with small lot sizes. So again, it's, it's not much, but it helps. That's what, that's why we're kind of looking into doing this. So that's that. Yep, the appointment, citizens' interest for the Community Preservation Committee. So Mr. Hinckley, you're probably wondering, why are we doing this again? For Mr. Ellis and Mr. Abreys, because the appointment slip never reached Ms. Labonte's office. So what I'm going to do is just kind of formalize the appointments one more time. The appointment slips will be made, sent over to Ms. Labonte's office, as I told you and, and Mr. Warner, previous meetings, which trying to clean up the books on appointments. It got a little sloppy over the last several years. Tanya from our office and Mr. Labonte and myself have been working on that to try to put dates on everybody so expiration dates all coincide with individuals.
Make the appointment list a lot easier.
Pretty much, so that when it comes up, you know what's, what's going on. So it's just a, a formality and I'll ask for a motion to appoint John Abreys to the Cons, uh, Community Preservation Committee.
Sure moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll ask for a motion to appoint Jesse Ellis to the Community Preservation Committee.
Sure moved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a, not the same situation, but it is Paulette Hudson. I've known her for a long time. She's an awesome person. She's already on the Board of Directors for the Council on Agent and she's also on the Coastline Elderly Services. She's a lifelong resident, grew up in the town of Akushna. Is there a motion to appoint Paulette Hudson to the Cultural Committee?
Sure moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll second that. So that's that. Under Selectmen's announcements, uh, I just want to let everybody know at home, in case you're looking at the PJ Keating portal, um, some dummies out there using my name, um, and putting stuff on the portal that is, um, I, I haven't read them all, but Mr. Kelly's informed me that some dummies out there using my name, um, and posting stuff on the PJ Keating portal. Um, so we will be looking into this individual and seeing if we can figure out who this clown is. Um, but if you read anything and it's got my name on it, it is not coming from Selectman Kevin Gasper. It's coming from a dope out in La Lali and somebody with keyboard muscles. So, yep, I called you a dope. And if you, if you want to come in front of me, um, and discuss why you're trying to represent me, I'd be more than happy to have that conversation with whoever this is, um, that's doing that on my behalf. And they've also sent out emails to my staff, um, saying some goofy things as well. My staff knows my email address and that's not my email address. So, um, hopefully, I know that we'll have the police department look into that. The detective's office will be looking into that hack as well as they always do. Um, I know sometimes it's difficult to find people through IP addresses. You could go to Walmart and buy a dummy phone and probably set it up right from there. We'll probably never know who you are, but hope to hell I never find out who you are, my friend. I'll say that. Um, Mr. Hinckley, you got anything on the Selectmen's announcements?
Uh, just one, uh, two quick things. First, I'd like to thank Chief Richmond for showing up two days in a row while he's on vacation. We appreciate you.
Without a Hawaiian shirt.
Without a Hawaiian shirt. That's next thing. And, uh, I'd just also like to say a big shout out to Chad and everybody else that runs Summer Rec. Uh, I've been hearing a lot of feedback saying, uh, the way it's handled is excellent. A lot of kids having fun. So once again, thanks to the parks, the park and the volunteers and everybody that helps with summer recreation.
Absolutely.
As a product of summer recreation, as a kid that turned into a counselor at summer recreation, I think it's a great program. Uh, and if anybody doesn't know about it, I suggest, you know, it might be a little too late for this year. Look into it for next year. It's a great way to get your kids out there, meeting new people, getting active, getting a chance to get on the fields and play some sports and do a lot of other friend-based activities with your community. It's a good program and, uh, thanks to the volunteers and the organizations that are.
Very well said, Mr. Hinckley. Anything else? Mr. Kelly?
No.
You got anything to report to the board?
Uh, most of it was covered in the various items. There are, are items that we'll deal with when we actually discuss the fall town meeting.
Very good, sir. All right, next Board of Selectmen's meeting is scheduled for August eighth. Is four-thirty still a good time for you, sir?
Anytime's good now. I set my schedule now.
All right, so we'll keep that one scheduled at four-thirty unless something else comes up. We'll inform Miss Sidney. Um, and just so everybody knows, Nick, if you could throw the camera on our new administrative assistant, Sidney Viveras. Nick? Wake up, Nick. There you go. There's Sidney Viveras.